All set? You're good?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Good, so we'll come to order. Uh, first order of business is to like Chairman. Entertain nominations.
I'm gonna nominate John Lombacher for chair for 2024.
There any further nominations? During that, we'll cease nominations. Uh, uh, we'll vote on John Lombacher. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So your name is, congratulations, John. That would've been fun. All right, let's see where we're at here. All right, so our adoption of the just agenda, do we have any adjustments? Uh, I'm gonna move to adopt the agendas presented with the exception of adding an item between eight A and B titled termination of land lease with clean air, Inc. And an item before fifteen A titled approval of job description for the district attorney detective investigator position. Since the routine nature of these additions, additional items is expected to be of little public interest.
Oh, second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now let's get to, uh, public comment. Do we have any public comment today? Did you see anything there?
Not anybody else.
All right. All right, now we need the approval of the minutes for December nineteenth.
Most approve the minutes of December nineteenth, Commissioner's special meeting is presented.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, now we need our update. John?
Them are tuned down. Hey, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Um, so you have in front of you, uh, our report. Uh, the Scudic Peninsula is still working on a decision on which way they're gonna go. Um, so that one is still open. We'll try to push them to get a decision by the end of this month. Um, cause that's the, currently the end of, um, committed ARP money, uh, well, I shouldn't say it that way, but the two twenty-five is, is committed. Um, next is Orland, that was approved. Um, that one's good to go, and that'll sit in the hands of, um, the Orland town, uh, to get together with Michael when they need, need that funding released to them. And then, um, the airport project, I think we talked about it last, uh, month, but Mike and I, Michael and I talked this, uh, last week. So we said we'd put it on there one more time, but that's, no further action is needed in that one. The vendors did not respond, so that one will take off our tracking list. Uh, um, any questions on those first three before I jump to the other?
Not for me.
Okay. So, okay, so the last one is, is, um, Mount Desert had, um, has come to the Commissioners. Uh, they are working with Spectrum. Spectrum has come to them and said, hey, we'll expand internet in your area. Um, they're gonna put, Spectrum will put some money into it. The town has a hundred and thirty-one thousand they can, um, put to it. And they asked if there was any additional funding from the Commissioners. I spoken to them and said that the, we have kinda closed out the ARP project, um, last month. I forget when it was actually done, but, uh, that it had been closed. And so I said, I, you know, again, I talked with Michael and, um, Derlin and said, okay, we'll bring it towards the Commissioners and see if, um, their, their ask of a hundred and forty-one thousand would come out of that ARP money. Um, but that, I said I'd had no, you know, it's up to the Commissioners to understand, you know, what they, I don't know if it's called reopening, or we're reassigning that, that ARP money, so to speak. But, um, I did say it was closed at this current time, but I would bring it in front of you, in front of the Commissioners.
I got a question for you. Right now, what does it look like, um, Spectrum's gonna contribute financially to this?
They had not mentioned that to me, I can ask that question.
Just curious. I don't know what you're saying.
Um, my opinion is, is that, I think that closeout really is, is a soft term. I think we have, and we did dedicate up to five million for broadband, we hadn't spent anywhere near that.
Yeah.
And I think what we were looking for was making sure that everybody that had an opportunity and either took advantage of it or had declined it. And once we get to a point, then, okay, now we move, move that money and, and move on. But, uh, and I don't think that, you know, a year and a half down the road, we want to entertain a broadband request. But I, I think this is timely, I think it's within, and, and I don't think we should consider what we did a month ago as a drop dead date. I think that's, you know, we're kinda putting the word out there that this is your last chance folks. If you want some ARPU funds for broadband, get, you know, get going. If not, we're going to dedicate that funds to others. So I'd like to entertain Mount Desert's request, put that on John's list of things to do, and, uh, see where that goes.
And I will.
I was just gonna say, I feel like, um, uh, while we're kind of, I'm not saying we're done with the program, but we're gonna use this money. And so that might be my, if somebody comes forward sometime in the course of the next six months to a year, and there might not be money, so my main thing would be, don't complain if you don't get any money, cause you had your opportunity, but that doesn't mean we're kicking it, kicking you to the side of the road if you come to us, so.
In my sense, John, is, is that if you are not, if you're not even started the process today, you're gonna be a long time before you're ready to ask for money, isn't that correct?
I would believe so, uh, you know, unless somebody, that, you know, somebody like, um, Spectrum was on top of it, and, you know, they've had, they've had the same amount of time, cause they did Lemoine, right? They knew this was out there a long time ago. Um, you know, they could, they could do it quicker than others, but certainly Commissioners, it's, you know, everybody now is waiting for the bead money from MCA, you know, to get, start, to start on that project. And that's gonna be, that'll be starting this year. Um, so that, and that money, there, there's no matching of, from a, from this Commissioner's standpoint, we've asked them, we've asked MCA, and there's no matching of money from that, from your standpoint. So yeah, it would be, as you said, as you've seen in the past, and as you just said, individual projects, and if they haven't started now, it's, they're gonna be behind, yeah.
MCA, is, is MCA contemplated Mount Desert at all?
Well, so the, their, their task of the two hundred and seventy million dollars that they're getting to solve broadband is to solve all, um, unserved and underserved locations in the state of Maine, as defined by the FCC maps. Um, so to date, they've, they've only, they haven't been proactively going out necessarily. They've been waiting for, um, opening up a grant round, and then somebody would come to them and say, okay, hey, we've got a grant, we've got a partner, here's what we're willing to put into it, here's, you know, here's the money, and that's where the Commissioners' money had come in on a few of those. Um, next year, the bead money is different. They're gonna be very, they have to be proactive, they're gonna be going out and looking for these unserved locations, and then developing plans with providers to solve the problem.
So, this would fall under the MCA, potentially, I guess that's a question that.
No, no, this, this, this one is not, right? This one, this one is, uh, Spectrum came to them, uh, worked with, Spectrum came and then worked, been working with Derlin and said, hey, we can help, uh, I should say Derlin's probably been most effective, but on the other way, but hey, here's what we can do. They come up with a plan, they figured out a, a project, um, and that's when they, they came to us and said, hey, is, is there still money available? But MCA's not involved in this one.
Okay, that's what I was, okay.
Uh, and, and, and from a report standpoint, I think you just, you said it, well, Commissioner Clark, if it's back on our plate, that's great. We will put together kind of that, so I can't hate to call it formal, but anyway, semi-formal report that we give you, anyway. Um, Commissioner, you had asked about the, uh, what is Spectrum putting into it, right? There's certain parameters we have to put together to present to you for a vote.
So right now, are we really at a spot where we'd even take any action on it today, or are we just looking for a general?
Direction for me. And I can go back to them and say, okay, here's this, it's a, it's, it's been a, you know, um, the Commissioners agreed that we can move forward, but what I need is, is all this information to map, and the timing, the money, and the timing, and all of that from Spectrum. To make, cause again, make sure it's gotta match the ARP guidelines, right? We're still under the ARP guidelines, that hasn't changed, and so it has to match those guidelines. And so, uh, I'll go back and ask for that information, create a report for you, probably as, as early as the next meeting.
All right, okay, so how about this? I'm gonna move to accept and file, uh, monthly report from Mission Broadband as presenter, and ask Mission to evaluate the, uh, Mount Desert project.
Second motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, Millard, are you on the line today?
Permission, Mr.
All right, so we've got your monthly report, do you have anything to add to it?
I'll have a typo in the monthly report.
Oh.
In the Eagle Island section, the, uh, UT five suppression reserve account, it listed in the report as G five thirty-four zero zero day zero zero, and it should be G five dash three four zero three day zero zero.
Okay. Uh, so I'm gonna move to accept and file YouTube monthly report as presented, with the exception of changing, uh, G five thirty-four hundred to G five thirty-four oh three.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Got a question for you, Millard, on that account. So tell me a little bit, like, how, how does that balance get created in that account? And if we end up voting to utilize that, what's the plan on rebuilding up the reserve, or how's that gonna affect your budget?
Um, it wouldn't affect my, my budget, my yearly budget, it just will affect that reserve. And, uh, what we've been doing is any year, if there was money left in the yearly fire suppression reserve account, we would just transfer it to this reserve, so.
You know, offhand, what's, you know, offhand, how much we put in there a year? And I'm just curious.
Whatever we get out.
Millard, this doesn't reflect what we might have put in for twenty twenty-three though, does it? The forty-three thousand?
No.
No, well, that's right, we're, we're talking about fiscal year, right? Oh, oh, we won't know that until, uh, until August, until, uh, August.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I have the same concerns, I think, that John does, Millard, that we're taking a, a large chunk of your reserve account for one entity. That doesn't, uh, that doesn't bother you, though, huh?
Well, yes and no, I've been, I'm trying to figure out how else to fund it, and the only other way I can figure to fund it is wait until just next year's budget for twenty twenty-five, which we wouldn't have available until June of, uh, July first of twenty twenty-five. And that drags this out a year and a half before they get any money for their fire equipment.
What normally comes out of that account for the, for the, not for the, not the reserve account, but the regular budgetary line? What?
The regular budgetary line, what comes out of that is the, the annual stipends or contract agreements for, with the various fire departments, and then any money that we have to pay them for service provided during the year.
For the extra runs and everything, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we sort of jumped into Eagle Island there, right? So, uh, okay, uh, so there's a motion and a second on for the monthly report.
All right.
Hi.
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 All right. Okay. And then, uh, move to approve the regional animal control agreement between the town of Trenton and Hancock County as presented.
So, uh, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna move to approve the regional ACO MOU between the town of Trenton and Hancock County as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna move to approve the regional animal control agreement between the town of Franklin and Hancock County as presented.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna move to approve the regional ACO MOU between the town of Franklin and the Hank, and Hancock County as presented.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right, now we're back to the Eagle Island Commission.
So, so what happens, Millard, if you, if you exhaust your, your budget for fire suppression, and you need more than the, the balance of thirteen thousand you'll have in your reserve account? Do you have a way to tap into something? What's the likelihood of that to happen?
Well, it hasn't happened in the last ten years. Um,
Well, I'm not big on.
I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, though, and whatever can go wrong will at the most inopportune moment. Um,
Well, I'm not big on inventing problems, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna.
I guess my thought would be, we do have a UT contingency fund of twenty-five thousand. So if we, if we needed more than the thirteen thousand balance that would be in the fire suppression reserve, we'd have to dip into that contingency account.
John, I think you're fully agreement to, to assist Eagle Island, and Millard's comfortable with that, taking that thirty.
Well, here, no problem with that. The only problem I have is we, you know, last time, you know, the county's council raised a couple issues, and I'm wondering, have those issues been solved? And if they ha, if they have them, fine, but if they haven't, I'm not sure we should be moving money yet, till that's done.
Well, those issues revolved around paying, using, um, TIF money, correct, Millard?
Yeah, well, we were told to use the TIF money, but then he also said that they should form a, uh, volunteer fire department, associate, association. Uh, Mr. Ginn was on this morning, I think he was in agreement with doing that.
Well, I agree, I, I, I think we're all on the same page, but before we move money, I think it's, the county should be make, taking steps to make sure that everything is in order. It sounds like everything will be in order, but I'm not sure we should be funding anything until it's in order.
Well, I think maybe a motion approves the thirty thousand on contingency upon them developing a fire department out there, I think that's the way we can craft this, so Millard can move ahead once, if, and, when that gets developed.
My call. Yeah, sorry. Um, so I'm wondering, Millard, is the intent that this would be given to the association? Or can the county purchase this apparatus and then house it at now, and for that purpose of, uh?
What it's. They had presented us with a, with a plan of what they wanted for equipment. And I'm, uh, personally, I wouldn't release any funds until we have the documentation that they've formed this, uh, fire association.
But that's why I think this, I mean, I agree with this action, but I think it's just premature.
Yeah, I mean, if that's.
Yeah, but, uh, Michael's concerned, who owns the equipment, uh, Millard? The county, and we loan it to them, or do we give those, give the money to them and they own it?
I thought, my thought was that this equipment was gonna be owned by this fire department. And I think the idea there is it alleviates us of a lot of liability.
Yeah, I, again, I agree with all those things, but I just think it's premature. I, I think that we need to table this till all those things are in order, and when they are, be happy to make this motion.
But I think Mr. Ginn is on this one, and I think what he wants to hear is that this, you are in agreement to do this so that he can, uh, move forward with getting this fire association organized.
Right. If I might speak, uh, Commissioners. Um, first, Happy New Year. Uh, thank you for, uh, continuing to work on this problem. Um, we're in complete agreement that, um, we need to incorporate, um, and comply with the terms of the law. There's real reasons for us to do this, by the way. Um, the, um, main state statutes, uh, uh, afford a great deal of, uh, liability protection to formerly incorporated and designated, um, fire association, volunteer fire associations. And of course, we want that, and there would be no volunteer fire departments in Maine if those same, uh, liability exemptions were not applied to them as well. So there's, there's, we have no disagreement whatsoever with the recommendation of your council on, uh, on incorporation. It will cost us, you know, a few thousand dollars to do this, so I don't wanna just do it if there's not a, a plan to actually fund the, fund the work here. Um, because that would be a waste of our resources, and certainly that wouldn't be helpful. So we would be fine with a resolution that endorses this, subject to an appropriate grant agreement, uh, being negotiated by whoever negotiates these thing, uh, things. Uh, and I presume that would come back to you at some point, um, for, uh, for your formal approval, but we would like to move forward and get the indication from you that, um, you endorse, uh, this overall plan. And happy to answer questions about any of this. I've become an expert in liability, trying to research all the, uh, ins and outs of, uh, fire departments, and there's quite a lot here that needs to be understood. And, and by the way, there is a simple test in the law as to whether or not the liability, um, uh, exclusions, uh, apply to a volunteer fire department, and that is simply that you have received funding. Uh, that's the only test in the law. So, uh, I think, you know, providing some funding that goes directly to the fire association is essential for us per, perfecting that liability. And I'm just not sure that Millard needs to spend his time buying three hundred dollar fire hoses. You know, it doesn't seem like that's worth his, his attention either. Um, all these items are really small, um, in terms of their individual costs, and we think we can manage and maintain them. Um, you know, once we have the funding for them.
So what about something like move to endorse the idea of, of funding, uh, any Eagle Island Fire Association? Uh, for up to thirty thousand dollars out of the fire suppression reserve? I just, I just feel funny about moving funds before there's mechanism to it.
Just add to that contingent upon there.
Yeah, so I'm not gonna transfer any money. I'm just gonna, I, I'm just going to move to support the, the idea, the concept, uh, for up to thirty thousand dollars. And, and, and then when everything's in order, then we can take, you know, figure out where to pull it, you know, where to pull it from. I think we have an idea now, but that may change over time. Does that sound, is that, is that agreeable? I mean, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, it's fine with us, I mean, we just wanna know that, you know, if we meet the tests that you've outlined, that, um, that we'll get the funding, and it won't all be for naught. Um, so yes, we will move forward, we think we'll take maybe sixty days or so to, uh, formally incorporate the association and get it in place. And so this won't take long, it's not a complicated process, there are hundreds of these, uh, across the state of Maine. So there's, there's, there's ample precedence here, uh, for the creation of volunteer fire associations. So it's not, not a big, big challenge or, or difficult to meet that requirement.
I don't think there's a lack of support or commitment from the Commission to get it done. Uh, we can draft the motion. Uh, do you have anything else to add?
I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to putting off giving them concrete assurance that we're giving thirty thousand. There's no reason that we can't craft a motion that says we approve thirty thousand dollar donation from this account to Eagle Island contingent upon them, uh, forming an association, and then that money doesn't go to them until Millard and Michael are satisfied that they're up and running, they got the equipment lined up, and so on. Now, this, this board is just a little fickle, and I'm concerned that six months down the road, we have a change of heart or something after, you know, after Mr. Ginn has been given some kind of assurance that we're gonna support it. I'm just saying, there's no reason we can't do this today.
Seems to be too different from what.
Well, Paul, Paul wants us to come back six months down the road and take official vote. I wanna take the vote today, leave Mr. Ginn with positive assurance that you have the funding provided, you meet, uh, Eagle Island meets their responsibility for, for establishing an association, so.
Well, and that's where we differ is, I, I just, I have a problem with taking official action to give somebody money until the mechanism is there.
Okay, craft your, craft your motion.
Uh, well, I'm, that's what I'm working on. I'm gonna move to endorse the concept of the Eagle Island Volunteer Fire Association, uh, or funding, endorse the funding, the concept of gotta give me a little bit here. For up to thirty thousand dollars. Uh,
Mr. Ginn, while he's working on that, do you anticipate there could be any liability issue? That you got your association formed, but we were still, you were still waiting for, for monies, and you were, you were getting involved in issues that could present liability, and you can't meet that threshold of being funded yet? Do you think that's, that's, that's a possibility?
Well, it would depend on, you know, whether or not we had a fire, I guess, uh, and we had to respond to it, uh, prior to receiving any funding from government. I mean, the, the test is very simple and straightforward in the state law. It says if you receive money, you are covered by all these, you're deemed to be essentially acting on behalf of the state, and you're, and you're afforded all the protections that, you know, state employees would ordinarily have. So until we perfect that, we are a lot, we are potentially liable, um, if someone were to sue us, I guess.
So you're gonna be responding to fires before and after you form the association, correct?
Uh, if we need to, yes, absolutely.
So at some point, the switch will be flipped. You will become just a group of volunteers, and you'll become an organized association, correct?
That's right.
And once that switch is flipped, you could have been protected from a suit, had you received funding at the time the switch was, was flipped, correct?
That is right.
So how's, how's this? Move to endorse the concept of funding the Eagle Island Volunteer Fire Association for up to thirty thousand dollars. Purchase the firefighting equipment indicated in the November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three memorandum in the Hancock County from Eagle Island Association, with such equipment to be used for fire suppression on Eagle Island. Does that communicate that?
Does it say contingent upon formation of their association?
Yes, it does now. Is that okay with everybody?
I'll second the motion.
Move to endorse the concept of funding Eagle Island Volunteer Fire Association for up to thirty thousand dollars to purchase the firefighting equipment indicated in the November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three memorandum to Hancock County from Eagle Island Association, with such equipment to be used for suppression of Eagle Island contingent upon the fa, the formation of the Eagle Island Volunteer Fire Fighting Association. Does that do it?
A second too. All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Ginn, does that?
Well, I mean, I'm taking this as an endorsement. I mean, I wanna think about it in a positive way, that this is an endorsement of our plan, and that we'll move forward as to meet those requirements. And while it may require a, uh, an approval of a, of an MOU or a contract, as you have done previously in this agenda at some point in the future, that, that is, um, something that, that would be done in the ordinary course of business when we're ready to, to show Millard that we've got the incorporation done, and that we're ready and able to do this. So I, I'm taking this as an endorsement. I, I understand that there's another step involved here, but, uh, and I do appreciate that, but, and we'll move quickly, because as, uh, the Commissioners pointed out, we, we don't want this to be some gap between incorporating and, and not receiving the, the ordinary protections that the law provides for these incorporations. So, uh, we'll, we'll move quickly to get this done. And, and you meet twice a month, so there's no reason why we can't quickly, uh, you know, get this done.
And, and, and again, I would be ma, I would be making, if all pieces were in order, I would. Again, I would be ma, I would be making, if all pieces were in order, I would make. The motion today. So.
All right, a call vote. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. And I'm going to oppose, not because I'm opposed to, to offering this, I'm opposed to not making this funding available the day that they become an association, so. I'm, I'm going to vote no.
All right.
Motion passes.
I'm going to move to approve the twenty twenty-four Australian animal contract with a small, uh, animal clinic as presented.
Second the motion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye. And Millard, I preempted you. Did you have anything to add there?
No, I don't. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, uh, ready for the airport. Leroy.
Yep, good morning.
Morning.
First, I'd like to apologize for the late entry there for the agenda item. Kind of snuck up on us that we needed to terminate an agreement before we could start an agreement on the same piece of land.
You have anything to add to your monthly report?
Nope.
Moved to accept and file airport. Monthly report is presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye. I'm removed to terminate the land lease with Plain Air Incorporated, a parcel known as P fifteen dated July. Eight, two thousand three, and then, and amendment one dated July sixth, twenty twenty-three. On approval of a new lease with. Lawn Cart dated. January fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Second the motion.
Discussion. You have anything to add?
Uh, no, this was, um, you know, we, we. Gave him, uh, the previous owner a one-year. Extension to, to make something happen and he's made something happen. Now he's, he's going to sell a, his building. Now we'll have an, an airplane and a hangar like it should be.
So just a real quick question. What's the intent in regards to his reported request to get a refund on the balance of what? He didn't. Use the lease for for the whole year.
Um, my intent would be give him the six-month refund of, uh, twelve hundred and three dollars and seventy-five cents for the. Portion of lease he didn't use.
And the commissioner will sign that warrant if it's on it?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't. Thinking about this, you can't. I'm not sure we can collect.
Well, you, you're going to recover that from the new rentist, correct?
Correct, correct, yes. So, yeah. So rather than getting paid twice for six months, we'll get paid once for six.
Yeah. Is that?
Yeah, I, I mean, we just didn't want to throw on the warrant with the assumption because it doesn't clearly state you, you pay it upfront for the year. So was it buyer beware, risk, you know, leaser beware thing, or is the county willing to do? Basically say, which is what the issue was I presented to. To Leroy yesterday is, you know. Really shouldn't have two leases covering two, the same period and. And two people paying us twice for it because that's obviously double different, but. Uh, I think the treasurer probably would like insurance too that if, that we are authorized to go ahead and put that refund on the warrant again.
So, and, and, and I'd like to add on to my motion if it's okay with a second, refund the unused portion of. The lease.
Now second to the amendment.
Does that, does that make it clear?
Yeah, it's good for me, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye.
The only other thing, Leroy.
Yes.
Any, any chance that we can find a couple hundred more? Implantments with, uh, the private carriers?
Uh, I, we are, we're fairly optimistic that that's going to happen, um. Cape Bear was, they, they really had a big push to, to get us to where we are. Um. They. With their numbers and there's already, uh, a hundred and twenty numbers already put in there from another operator. Which should bring us up in the vicinity of. With Cape Bear's predictions, I, I haven't talked to him in the last day or so to see. Where the year ended, but they was, they was thinking that they was going to have right around ninety-eight hundred of their own. Plus the hundred and twenty from, uh, this, uh, operator called Trade Winds. It's already reported. So that was going to actually put us within eighty is what the prediction was and. We're, we're. Pretty optimistic that we can make up. Probably two hundred or more if we need to. Um, so once we get, um. There's a, we have to wait for the FAA to put out a, a letter of form for the twenty-three. Uh. Implantments so we can start going after. The operators that we know operated in and out of here. That, uh, to get them to report. I just, we just need to have all that paperwork in hand, so I, I, once I start. Communicating with these people, I don't want to give them a chance to. To slip away. I want to have everything ready to go.
Great, good. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
And my understanding is that private implements don't.
Correct, correct. Private, private implements don't count. Site C inflights don't count. It has to be a commercial charter type of operation.
You don't have enough chartered, private chartered. Never mind.
Yeah.
The point is that if guys like me started. Recording numbers, it wouldn't help.
But if somebody chartered a private flight, that, that does count.
Yes.
Right, right. With a, yes, with a, what they call a part one thirty-five commercial operator or a one-twenty-one operator, so. You know, we, we've been trying to keep tabs a little bit, you know, watching the, the, the operators in and out of here this summer and picking up names and. I got a pretty good list of, you know, the people, the, the, the operators that have been here. We just need to get them. On board to report and, and, you know, there's. You know, there's a few in New England. It's always been right there to help us, so, um, I, I think we're. I'm, I'm pretty optimistic that we're going to get there.
Okay, thank you Leroy.
Okay, I'm going to move to approve the land lease agreement between the County of Hancock, Maine. Lawn Cart has presented.
Second, second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, this guy just bought an airplane, so this is, this is actually a pretty good deal. Now. We've got a new airplane owner on the field. He's got a hangar and. It's going to work out really well.
Thank you, Leroy.
That's all I got. Thanks.
All right, Eddie.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Anything to add to your monthly report?
I do not. I want you to have any questions.
I'm not moved to accept the file EMA. Your report is presented.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I, uh, appear before you this morning in conjunction with, uh, both Mary Ann and Mr. Alfred May. And that's a name familiar to you. Alfred is our main CDC liaison. Uh, serving both Hancock, Washington County. He has approached us about, uh, Hancock County and the agency specifically. Hosting a family intern. The family interns are a program that is, uh. Administered and coordinated by Boden College. Um, they take college students throughout, uh, New England. Uh, to work with district public health liaisons throughout the state. Alfred has enjoyed the services of, of the family interns for a number of years. Uh, one from Hudson, one from U N A, several from Boden. Wheaton and University of Maine Mochias, um, some recent years. Uh, we would anticipate, uh, having this person based here in Els, in Ellsworth. Uh, working on public health matters for Hancock County. Uh, over the ten weeks during the summer term. So it says you're doing the summer break from, from your college semester. Uh, the cost to do this, um. Would be approximately forty-five hundred dollars. Over the ten weeks, there would be, uh, formerly, as Mary Ann. As coordinated with me, a part-time employee of the county under thirty-two hours per week, so ineligible for benefits. Um. To fund this, we, we have a couple of different resources to draw from, however. I'll share that. We have some grant funds that we've been carrying that were a stipend grant. To the county dating back to two thousand eight. Um, that have gone unused. And I would recommend that we draw from that. Cash, uh, source, uh, to pay for this over the course of the summer. If that was the original intent, that, that, that stipend grant in two thousand eight. Was granted to the county to further planning for H one N one. So two, two pandemics ago. Um, and it has resided, uh, here for us since, so this is a great way to. Not, not that that's a problem, but it's a great way to make use of that money. And, and help us resolve that. Something we've not necessarily struggled with, but we've been challenged by, how do we? Do that and. In a way that meets your joint intent.
So my question is this, uh. Procedurally. We, we approve. Uh, being fiscal agent and later would come a transfer sheet that would outline what. Shanky's outlined is, is, is that will procedurally would, would happen?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to move to approve Hancock County serving as fiscal agent. Collaboration with Maine CDC for the hosting of a. Family intern for ten weeks in the summer of twenty twenty-four as requested.
Second the motion.
Any other discussion?
Well, if I look at the required skills. I find it amusing. It's got to have a good sense of humor. What do you do? Tell some jokes, see them lines?
Well, that's, that's actually a lot of job descriptions these days.
I can't really speak bad, Commissioner, but I welcome someone with a. upbeat sense of humor.
I'd like to see an interview process where that's evaluated.
All right, uh, anything else?
Thank you. I think that's. That's somewhat good.
I think it will be a great opportunity for us and I appreciate your support.
Well, have you read, have you read the position description?
Yes.
Really? My eyes start to cross when I see what the guy's got responsible.
Yeah.
Hello, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Goodness, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, buddy. Thank you.
I'm going to move for approve hiring Tyler Ham of Dedham as part-time. As needed correctional officer with no benefits effective twelve thirty twenty-three of level nine A.
Second the motions.
Tim, you have anything to add?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye. Move to approve hiring certified correctional officer Peter Armstrong of Ellsworth as part-time as needed correctional officer. With no benefits effective. One-six twenty-four, I would assume, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Twenty-four, uh, at level nine C.
Second the motion, and ask that Tim. If you'd like to give us the test occasion for C.
He works full-time at, uh, Rain Correction Facility.
Is that enough for me?
Sounds good. All those in favor?
Aye, aye. Move to approve hiring. Gabriel Henze of Winnipeg as part-time as needed correctional officer with no benefits effective one-six. Twenty-four, level nine A.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to accept the resignation of correctional officer Lance Thibodeau effective twelve thirty-one twenty-three.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't mean to. Preempt you before you've got a word in.
No, it's fine. I don't. Um, I do have the AMHE contract finally came through. To sign for the.
Did we, did we vote last time to, to sign them?
Yep.
If we just need to sign it?
Yes, you're going to have to sign it.
You need to take it right back with you?
Yeah, but I have. At this point, I have. Mission of areas. Chair. As you know, the opioid.
That's previously been. Do you need a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, Tim will get it.
Are you seeing the commissioners design that travel motion?
Move to approve the hiring of Amy Smith of Portland as administrative assistant to sheriff's office, starting salary nine C twenty-four fifty.
Second the motion.
Do you have anything to add, Chair?
No, she worked in jail for eighteen years and did a lot of those details up there and she's coming back from Penobscot County. Same thing, she's, uh. She'll be good, she'll replace who we had, but. She'll do her job.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye. Move. Move approval, uh, excuse me. Move approval of Christopher Thornton as part-time deputy as of twelve thirty twenty-three.
So, a second big?
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I didn't mean to pre, preempt you either, but I was working.
Jump in anytime.
Thank you.
Anything else to add to your monthly report?
Uh, nothing unless there are questions.
Move to accept and file facility directors. Monthly report is presented.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Uh, sheriff's office steps update. You know, we've got three levels of concrete. And today the, uh. Workmen from Northeast Mechanical are, are hooking, uh. Up the manifold for the snow melt system. And we're, the Becker is looking at the next. Favorable day to pour out steps, so. Against all odds, it looks like it may actually happen.
So is the upper level, is that done?
Yes.
Good deal.
Yeah, so that is now goes all the way to the. And it has a large scupper along. The side of the retainer wall. And that piping carries down to the next landing, but there's another collection area, so all of that water that we. That we would melt off into the pass we see just puddle there, it's going to be shipped off to that storm crane. Uh, far less problematic.
To get your railing up on the new section?
No, railings, now, once they. Clear that, they'll, that railing's been ordered to, uh, Black Congress with the ballusters, as you recall. And whatever the lead time is on that, a few weeks. My feeling is, as long as you make the steps operable, even provisional rail, until we get that. None is acceptable to me. We'll be glad to see that happen. So moving along slower than we'd like, but. Still moving. Uh. Plumbing, we've had, uh. The, uh, contractor, the engineer and the vendor, Nicholas Plumber, who's our. Uh, plumber. Looked at these plans and we talked about macerators, big chewers. And there. Would have to be located because of the jails up on peers. There's no room. To put these things, so they have the nearest place would be in the boiler, which is okay. But that leaves that span of pipe. From the other end. To this end, so they're, they'll only get two strategies. One, to take the trouble area. Which we usually have, which is on the north side of the building. And enlarge that train and bring it down to a macerator. Couple that with an eye, with the, uh, uh. Strategy. To prevent these things from happening in the first place. Then we have limiting flush systems now, but they're mechanical. And they figure out ways to defeat it. And what the new fixtures they're going to install. Will allow the capability, if you have a problem. In May, to limit the number of flushes. Per day, in other words, you just kind of. Press the button over and over. And keep that deluge going, so it's a. A kind of a new way to skin a gun, I guess, but. Uh, that equipment is available from a couple of vendors. We're looking for the best value. So we'd have to either way put electricity, uh, one hundred and fifteen volts into those. Collection areas like between pod. Uh, the day room, cells. Uh, bed one, two, three, four, or one, two, three, four, five, six, they'll have connecting closets. Would be very easy to. To, uh, provide power there.
So, so the problem is people putting stuff down there and flushing, right?
That's part of the problem, yes.
So.
And antiquated piping, uh, you've got, uh, cast iron up there that. The more they get scraped and. And ground and flushed and gen it, the, the more of the sidewall. That you rip out of there, the quicker it erodes. And catches things. So. Uh, and once there's an outage, another, another whole scenario of, of. Of conditions occur, they start putting their waste in the toilet. They can use it, so we get their, uh, plastic cups and so forth. And, uh, there's no telling why you fish hide there, to be honest with you.
Okay.
But the big culprit is the sheets and the clothing.
I just want to make sure we solve this problem.
Yes.
You know, and, and I'm just worried that limiting the number of flushes.
Well, that's in conjunction with, that's, that's to protect us longer, like the pipe that we want. We want to put that. We want to put that, that, that macerator rate where it happens.
Yeah.
But the ceiling doesn't provide that, so at least it will give us a collection point where we know where it is. Instead of starting from ground zero each time.
It's fair to solve in this problem. They have twenty-four hours a day to sit there and think how they can follow things.
It's really.
Because we devote, we devote twenty minutes a day thinking about how we would solve.
Oh, I know, right?
If we were to solve this problem, we just need.
Yeah, you've got to, if they're ready to defeat the conniving mind with unlimited time, I'd like to know about it.
On another subject, if we can, you're recommending a rate increase to the state, is that going to require action by us? Are you going to?
It will, it will.
Are you going to negotiate with them, is that what you're doing?
Uh, yes, Michael and I.
Just, just negotiate, come back with.
And that's a step up, we'll see what they say, once that's.
Curious, what's the process?
Michael, I have a new MOU drawn up, I assume?
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's just updating that and plugging in the rate and taking it back. Jeremy, him and I have talked, but we haven't settled on anything at all yet, so we wanted to make sure we had our plan in place with what we thought was appropriate before we started negotiating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think I have to add to your monthly report.
Uh, just that we're looking at some options for backup communications, radio communications. We've, we've known about these missions for quite some time. One of our problem areas is radios upstairs of Michael's office where backup power is, can't reach there. Radio, so we're looking at a few options, whether it's battery packs or, or even looking at Tesla battery, wall setups, things like that, that were on for days and days, and that's the case. We had the option to go across the street to the old, the old E P D, except for that radio's been decommissioned, under most of us, but it also wasn't capable of most of our communications. Our radio comes, the new Ellsworth Police Farm is based on networks into our, our radios upstairs, so that's, those are a few of the things that we're looking at, how can we keep that? On the, on the, on the other hand, we did have communication with fire departments, the iron responding program, which I'm sure you saw on the report. Communicating with them via my iPad at Eastern Main Medical Center, because I had web access there and cell phone communication, so it was, it was, it worked the way that we anticipated it would in the all, when that all of failed situations. Those are a couple of things we're looking at, so. And the, the odd chances ever happens, you know, what, what can we do to operate one fifty? Yeah, I'm sure, and it's not a reflection, anyway, it's just the way things are.
Yep, I've never seen a generator around this place work consistently in the six years I've been here, so.
Well, and a couple of things, you know, we're considering, you know, maybe a secondary generator or, you know, the public safety center, you know, those things we're just, we're just considering, we're not further near actions. Just trying to find the best, the best planning for our bucks. Hopefully at some point when Andy's new building gets put up there, we'll have a backup place to go, you know, if, if we're going to be down for more than a couple of hours. So, the other, the only other thing I had is a couple of storms we had this month, free tax, the staff pretty heavily there, I was here for one of them. I think they said they had a hundred calls and a hundred and twenty seconds or something there, at one point, this continuous with daily calls. But that's okay.
So it looks like you had a long day.
It was a long day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm going to move to accept the file R C C monthly report is presented.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Got to add to your report, of course.
Look, I have to ask some, I don't have anything current.
Okay, I'm going to, uh, move to accept the file of human resource monthly report is presented.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Before you just get approval to advertise in house for the detective position, the only information that needs to be added to closed advertisements is salary or hourly wage, and I'm not clear which.
So that was the final issue we were trying to hammer out, even as late as last night, but. So obviously, a couple of different things exempt versus non-exempt, and they will, as you go through the criteria, there was some discussion about whether that position should be exempt. My opinion, the detective position is very closely tied to the description of what sheriff is, obviously, except there's additional things this detective would have associated with the DA's office. Looking quickly through the F S L A, I did find a section that references the public safety and health workers are, the exemptions are not part of that, so that would be the question. This is a non-exempt, for example, and if it is a non-exempt position, then during the budgeting process, we kind of were basing this all off a number. And then trying to factor in the closest scale that we can get. But from a staff perspective, before we went ahead and plugged in a number, I guess there was a couple of questions. Is this detective position that's now going to be part of the DA's office, because it was clear at the time that it wasn't going to be part of the sheriff's department? Does the current contract with C B A, and we read the language, it mentioned detective, but it doesn't say is that sheriff's department or? So, does the collective bargaining agreement with the law enforcement unit extend to this employee so that we could consider them under the scale for the sheriff's office? And if that's the case, then obviously you can go, there's a little bit more leeway to get that closer to the amount. If we are treating him as non-exempt and hourly under non-exempt, then we can get it up to thirty-seven, which takes us about sixty-six thousand, which is fifteen to hundred to two thousand, give or take, right in that area, less than what you want to budget originally.
Well, if you, if you had communication with sheriff, what we're not going to say is his jurisdiction as a deputy sheriff.
I, I mean, I, we haven't had any direct conversation with the sheriff, because the last thing we knew, the sheriff was gonna, I mean, this was separate. So whatever's happening with the DA's office is happening with the DA's office, whoever the DA hires and chooses to hire. That would be up to him to come back and recommend.
But he needs law enforcement jurisdiction.
Well, and that was the other question we asked.
Where does he get that, because my sense is the easiest way is that he continues to be deputy sheriff, and as his jurisdiction under, but as a deputy sheriff. And that would have to, to my point of view, that would have to occur in order to him to be considered the C B A for sheriff's department.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's my opinion, but the other part of this, I mean, the only discussions I had or took place with the sheriff was that he wasn't going to necessarily do that. Now, I mean, we'd have to directly ask him that, so we can know a hundred percent, but if he's not in his department, he wasn't going to extend his authority, because he has no control of the deputy, was my understanding. I'm rather detective in this case, I mean, if he extends those powers, he's extending it of his office, and yet he has no control, authority, responsibility.
I don't think it's fair to put him on the spot at a public meeting here, but I think you need to resolve it, if he's adamant, he's not going to continue to commission as a deputy, you're going to have to deal with that.
But my anticipation was, my understanding was, he was not going to offer that, and the incoming detective would have to basically work with the main criminal justice and establish it as a separate agency. Served by my agency, Justice Academy, so.
Sheriff, you were going to say something?
I was just going to say, we can have these discussions, I mean, that's.
Is that, well, let's put your own spot, I think you need to have that discussion. So, my personal opinion is, and history will prove it out, that there's been deputies commissioned outside of the office and whatnot, that sheriff didn't supervise, but then those arrangements worked out. I don't know if those still occur anymore, but, you know, we have, over the years, we have commissions, certain places, for different reasons, and so on. So, I'd like to see that you have those discussed with the sheriff and see if that's possible, that makes the, makes the whole process easier.
Have it done.
So, so, um, to me, this isn't ready for prime time, we've got some issues, that there was, you know, staff's had some issues to work out. And, you know, and I know we just got this job description today, and it doesn't look like it's been reviewed by human resources again. I think we should, we should approve the table, all this, so all those things are hashed out, because I'm just not comfortable. I mean, I think we're putting potentially the DA and the sheriff in a bad, you know, I think they need to figure out the best course of action. Is that it?
I mean, and those, the questions that were just brought up, we asked last night to try to get those, or yesterday I can try to get those answered. So, I mean, I, I can't stand in front of you and say that I know how this is all going to work out, because I don't.
Yeah, so that's, that's why I think it needs to be paid.
But I do know there is a, a sense of urgency that's been expressed about trying to get this position advertised, which again, parrot horsing is, can you do one without the other?
I'm not comfortable doing one. I, I think we need to work these things out, who's going to supervise, incorporate them in, into this, uh, this job description? And have all our ducks in a row, and then have it just be, you know, a quick.
If we're not going to, Paul, I think at least we ought to give them some direction as to, A, the salary level, and B, whether or not it's exempt or non-exempt. Because that's two outstanding issues that are not here, in fact, that's the only two issues that we, we did that, this is complete, as far as I can see, I suspect they aren't in it. Supervision, a lack thereof, and whether or not he's a deputy, has nothing to do with the job description, it's an operational issue between the DA and all of that.
The only thing it impacts, I guess, is the question of what scale can we plug this first in.
Exactly.
Correct, I mean, that.
Right, and, and again, here we are, just like dispatch, where we only have one position, and so I think you should find something on the, uh, non-union pay scale that nears the sheriff's detectives, and even if you have to incorporate another rating.
So we would most likely, I mean, fourteen L, I think was around thirty-seven, was it, Monica?
Yes, yeah.
Which took us about that fifteen hundred or so to two thousand, I think it was like sixteen something below what had been budgeted for the position. And of course, what was budgeted wasn't a full year either, so.
Because that budgeting was a, it was a crystal ball for that interview, we got paid before we developed the position.
I mean, I guess that's the other part of it, if this is a new position, do you want us to go through the process of scoring it similar to we've done with other positions? And then come up with a scale that's specific to it, but that still won't solve, well, I mean, it'll solve the issue in terms of we have a, a new scale, but you may be having additional just for this position.
This, excuse me, this individual is going to be doing the same work that the sheriff's detectives do, just for a different individual, for the DA's to do this here. And the difference is, is that the sheriff can promote perhaps a patrol deputy, train them and bring them up to a certain level of proficiency that he'd like to see in a detective. Bob Granger is going to have to go out and find a very competent individual in, because they have the supervisor, they have nobody they can turn to for advice and direction. So this person is going to have to be able to be up and running on day one. Now, for that reason alone, we can't consider anything less than what the sheriff pays his detective, because Bob is really expecting better experience and qualifications at the time of hire.
So the dilemma we have with that is just, and it's not really dilemma, it's just we need to know how far you want to go here. The union rates are obviously much higher, because they're part of the union, so the law enforcement union rates for the detectives and law enforcement, sheriff's office, obviously going to be higher than anything we can do on the non-unions, that are non-exempt, non-union scale. So we would have to be creating something new for this one way or the other. And if you want us to do that, that's fine, we just need to know that that's kind of, you want us to come up with something which really isn't coming up with, is taking what's in the job description? And basically getting it to, to match with what, as you stated, is pretty much everything that the detective has in the sheriff's. And maybe more or less, I don't know, but that would seem to be the case, and then we plug him in a new scale or add something to the existing.
You probably already told us, but the, the highest paid position in the non-union pay scale is how, how far you're of the DA's, of the sheriff's, investigating.
So, uh, non-exempt, it's at fourteen is thirty-seven oh four at an L, so fourteen L is thirty-seven oh four.
I'm.
For fourteen L is thirty-seven oh four, so.
Fourteen in the non.
In the non-exempt, yeah, and that's the highest.
What is, what is it in the sheriff's?
So sheriff's was down, I mean, the highest of the sheriff's, well, of course, we added that new fifteen.
Fourteen for the detectives.
Yeah, so the fourteen with the sheriff's, oh, taking out all the way down to L was forty-one fifty-nine. And at fourteen, to get close to where we were, fourteen I was the closest in that, but that's still at thirty-eight oh six. So fourteen I is thirty-eight oh six, and fourteen J is thirty-nine nineteen, so it's somewhere in between the two of those, is kind of where it takes to equate to what we figured in the budget.
So. What we're on right now is approval of, of, of the job description, because that's what was added. I'm not ready to make a motion around this, because of all the things we're talking about, it's not been reviewed by human resources, there's no signature here. So I'm going to move the table this item to a future Commissioner's meeting.
Paul, I'm not opposed to tabling them, I'd like to give them such a sense of direction from the commission on these two issues, pay and non-exempt. Well, not opposed to putting this off and, and telling them to bring back.
Well, do you? I guess I agree with Michael's position, is, you know, to me, I think we, they need to bring us a, a proposal and a reason behind it, I'm not, you know, I, I'm not sure we can do that yet. I don't think we have the, you know, all the research that's required to do that, am I wrong, Michael, or Bob, I?
I understand it was that the commissioners had a figure in mind for salary, and then.
I don't.
Which is, which is the overall budget amount, but that's the question, is it a salary or is it an exempt? Now, again, I read this to say there's exemptions, and if it, there's no exemptions, then I'm not sure how we'd be paying law enforcement the way we're paying either.
Correct?
So detective, sheriff's detectives are not exempt.
Exactly, yeah, so that's. As I go through this and look at it more, I would say that it's most likely is a non-exempt position.
And I don't know.
But that's the rate.
I don't know what the criteria is for, for exempt that would make him qualified for this, because he doesn't supervise anyway. And so I'm not sure why he'd even qualify for exempt employee as a detective in the DA's office.
And those would be the, I mean, we haven't done together, we haven't gone through and done that reanalysis.
That's what I'd like to happen.
To me, that, I did it late last night and early this morning to try to get clarity so we could get the best decision possible today, and hopefully not delay anything that, that people needed slash wanted to get done, so.
I, I'm not insulting anybody, I just think we're not ready yet. I think these three folks or four folks need to get together and hammer out some of these ideas, because I, I can't tell you, other than what's in the budget, what, where I am on a salary, because I don't know.
Well, let's talk about it, I mean, if you want to know something, listen, and, and, and my opinion is that this has got to mirror the sheriff's detectives. We're asking for more out of, out of DA's detective than we have for the sheriff's request to promote a patrolman to the day. So, I mean, that should help you establish some sense of what you want to pay this guy and what you need to pay this guy. When we did the budget, what was the, what did we base it off of? Was it? Detective's top day.
Yeah.
For the sheriff's department.
So we've had that discussion.
So we have kind of had.
I have.
Now, I'm not, so I think they've got the, I think the.
Right now, I guess, with that is, you know, if we maximize at the top of the non-exempt, non-law enforcement, then it doesn't get us to where you want to be. Which means we either need to add another pay grade or we need to add steps beyond L, which would be probably unprecedented. To somehow get us to that step, and then you've got to prove it, because that's the other thing. I mean, we can only propose higher, so the DA technically can only go up to a C or whatever scale it is. Unless you provide some type of. Guidance and, and structure to what the actual position. So I, I agree with Commissioner Clark, and then I think you almost have to assign. This position with whatever the, the scale is and, and, and teach it a part, treat it accordingly. So whether it's creating a whole new separate scale or it's adding. A fifteen, which would apply just to. And, and drawing that out from there. I think that's the way you can have.
Why is, why would we be opposed to adding a new grade to the non-exempt scale?
I'm not.
We're supposed to do it. I mean, and that's what it takes. We now we creating a new position. And if that new position requires us to add a new higher grade to the existing scale, that's, that's out of. Doing the business.
So the, the other part of that question then would be does, you know, does the job duty responsibilities, all that bring it to the level if we plug this in, it's a basis for whatever we're gonna do, but.
Well, if it doesn't, you didn't write the job description correctly.
All right, go ahead.
I'm just sitting here thinking how difficult you guys are making this sound. There was a detective at the DA's office before. I realized it was a part-time position. But was that detective on two different pay scales? Did he have two different bosses? Um, did he answer to the sheriff? I mean, these are all things I'm just thinking. It's, it's almost like you, it's, you're making it way too difficult. Because there was a detective there.
Two wrongs don't make a right.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. I don't know how it went.
Because it had been done a certain way doesn't mean that's how we should do it, especially since we're creating this new. So we just wanna get it right. And our authority staff, I think, is somewhat limited, which is why. We're here before you have this conversation. I mean, if we could hear it this afternoon, you could do it.
I'm gonna recommend that it's a, that's a non-exempt position. That he be paid. At a grade equivalent to the sheriff's department's detectives, and if that requires the staff to develop a new grade for the, for non-union pay scale, so be it. Incorporate that into the job description. Have this discussion with the sheriff as far as supervision, which has nothing to do with the contract, and bring us back a finished contract.
That sounds like a motion.
I don't think it needs, I think it's general consensus. I mean, let's, let's move on the, on the contract. Michael, Michael, is if, if by general consensus, we approve that you have the direction you think you need.
I mean, that there's multiple people involved here, but if, I certainly think it's a priority for all of us to get together, and I think we know the direction you're looking to. Take this position, yes, is best I can say, but I, I don't wanna speak for anybody else.
With regards to the urgency, this position wouldn't start until March first, right?
Well, commissioners had said February.
February, that was.
Pardon?
February first, that's why I was.
I thought it was, if February fifteenth, and somebody.
So it was after, it was after the, the assumption was if you'd be able to get somebody hired by the first meeting in February, which I think is the sixth of this, yeah.
September first.
But I, I don't think we budgeted. It was forty-five weeks, wasn't it, Monica?
Yeah.
That we budgeted.
It wasn't forty, what's that? It's ten and a half weeks?
Forty-five weeks would leave seven weeks into the year.
Seven weeks into the year, so that's the third week in January?
Yeah, middle of February.
That was what, that was my understanding.
Well, that's, that's getting close to thrust in medicine.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, my head's spinning. I do.
It gives, it gives essentially two more meetings to.
I knew, I am not prepared. For this at all. I don't know.
Well, we're not really taking any action on it. We're just such a given direction.
Right.
And, and if we.
I feel like we've given direction where it needs to go.
If we, in agreement, well, that's this direction, and that's all we have to do today, Sheriff.
I, and because to me, go ahead, Sheriff.
I was just gonna say, i- if you've decided and agreed that you're going to have another staff. That's pretty well come by on what percentage you're gonna be. You can figure it out with dollars and cents. And then we can get together and figure something out and go back to you and save you a lot of time in this meeting.
Yeah.
You know, give, give the opportunity to the people who really, you know, are, are kind of concerned here. We know what they're doing. Bob's position has been approved. Let's help him get that position, get it up and going. So I just offer that. Actually, if it takes Bob and I, Mike to get together, if you agree that they're gonna add another step, that's pretty simple to figure the percentages on, on what that pay scale is gonna be. And we can come back and define a D A.
Thank you. How about this? I'm gonna make this motion. Move the table aside to a future commissioner's meeting with the direction given by consensus at today's meeting.
Second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I, I really think, Bob, that we can take final action on this next meeting.
Okay.
So, giddy up, go.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. And then. That's the, uh, the next item is really the same over. What? Approval advertising house only for the district attorney detective. I'm gonna. There's no action to take on that because we haven't approved. So are we just skipping over it, or do you wanna mostly table that one? I'm gonna move the table this item. To a few, uh, to a future commissioners' meeting with the direction given by consensus at today's meeting, so same motion.
Second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Uh, Chuck on the line.
Mr. Jarvis. Chuck is there? Yep.
Uh, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you a little bit about. Product by a company known as No Before. Uh, I brought that to your attention because they are so far the leader in presenting and qualifying for cybersecurity training. I can't do all these things by myself, and sometimes I run out of ideas, and I don't want to recycle and rehash the same things over and over again. They provide not only training, but they also provide accountability. They also will provide the opportunity to know who's completed the task, who has not completed the task. Being able to contact them again, set reminders, set classes up. One of the caveats of No Before, who were some of the others that I looked at, was that No Before also has an H R component. I've spoken with the H R representative and have not received a day or name on, on her behalf. But it was just something that I, I saw that would bring some more benefit to the product. Uh, currently, we're looking at about a hundred and one individuals. Um, so that would put us into a secondary bracket, which would bring us a lower group. For the basic intro at a dollar sixty each. And then, uh, if we do decide to go with the H R component, that'll be another sixty-three cents per person. That should bring us to a total of two hu- two thousand. Uh, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, I believe, is the overall total if we decide to move forward in that direction.
So. I have a couple of comments. Uh. First is, uh. I like this concept. I think it's a good way to, uh, you know, manage this. Uh, I don't think it's ready for primetime because H R hasn't weighed in. Uh. But I, you know, I fully support it. I, I think this is ano- another item that needs to be. Uh, table to futures, future commissioners' meeting. Uh, once, you know, all relevant departments have weighed in and made a recommendation, but. The concept, I think this is a good idea. And the other portion of it is, you know, uh, this is something that seems we could come out of ARPA. Uh, so we might wanna consider that if, if. The departments all agree, and, you know, we make a commitment for more than a year, but. You know, again, not everybody has had a chance to weigh in on this, and I think that. The, the part of relevant departments need to weigh in.
Yeah, so I, I was just trying to check with Mary Ann and see if she was ready to weigh in and on, and if she wasn't, then obviously.
So we're, as well, we need first specifically four components that they can handle. And at the moment, I have two components they can handle for me. Um, so I'm missing two of the four that I consider like absolutely necessary. Um, they can do ergonomics and they can do harassment training. And I'm missing the other two parts, which, um. We would like to have this as part of the training process, and I'm wondering if we don't have. Um, something that we already have a membership to that would take care of that. I, one part I do like about this. Is that they send the reminders and make sure and track the training, and I think that is helpful.
Okay, so. So I'm gonna move the table this item to a future commissioners' meeting. Uh, once all relevant departments have had a chance to review the product and make recommendations.
I'll second the motion. Um. So, uh, we would do it for this one year. In theory, and then, uh, see how it works out for us. Uh, and you don't know if by any chance that they have a longer contract than one year. Just wonder. Um, I just don't, no, I do not know, but I can definitely. If it ends up going through, then we probably should have mentioned what happened. Uh. Yeah, I think maybe something to at least look at a little bit while we still have our funds. It might be able to extend it out longer than that.
Maybe squeeze them a little bit for discount.
And then, uh. Then it's gonna end up impacting the budget.
Okay.
Otherwise, okay. Okay, all right, so, uh, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Move to, uh. Move to accept it. Move to approve ugly bill. And warrants as present.
Seconded. Uh, do you have any?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. All right, our audit R F P.
Uh, we're just in the very beginning stages of. Of putting together an R F P, and, uh, I spoke with a, an accountant friend of mine who would, who's local. And. Uh. He's not willing to submit an R F P because he doesn't take care of counties. Um, but he did give me the opinion that if we have an accountant that is willing to continue working with us as a sole source. We may want to decide to stay that route to see what they can give us for a continuing contract. Uh, and I have put out feelers to a couple of other, um. Firms in the state to see if they're willing to submit an R F P. So. It's the very early stages. We wanted to really just let you guys know that. We're looking at the process to see what the best way to proceed is, and hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a.
And some more, right? So when I saw this, I was thinking to myself, I don't remember.
It's been.
When's the last time there was an R F P?
It's been, well, it was, um, twenty-one for three or four years, so. It was like seventeen to twenty-one, eighteen to twenty-one, but it stretched into twenty-three. So twenty-four is the year that we need to. To have a new contract.
So, or the twenty-twenty-three though, right? Because we had to, it's somebody here we just finished.
Yeah, yes, for the twenty-three.
Right, so. Uh, and, and what, I mean, one of the things that it's hard for us to quantify for you, because I, I mean, I think that's part of what we'll try to finish doing over the next couple of weeks. Uh. There's been a significant change in recent years because of additional requirements, staffing, skills. More and more municipalities, public agencies and stuff are finding it harder and harder to get. Companies to have the ability to audit, provide those audit services of public entities. So that pool has shrunk.
Uh, significantly.
Yeah, so. I, I mean, I think over the next couple of weeks, if we can, if we hear back from those other couple of ones. And I mean, we can check with the other counties too, just to see who else is being used. If we come back with a feeling that it's not gonna be probably any legitimate qualified bid, then our recommendation would be. To try to sole, single source it. With the recommendation of the council and try to get a price out of the current provider.
Well, and, and, and to be honest, consistency is important also.
Yeah.
And Monica mentioned that, but again, I think, thank you, I know, but I don't think we can take any action today.
No, no, but I, I do think, one, to start the process, but two, also, I mean, give you an opportunity to look at it. It's basically about the same thing as before. We just added, you know, Monica put some new stuff in, obviously to adjust for the new. New requirements and the additional requirements that changed over the last few years, so. And obviously the outer money, which. Has been an add-on since then as well, so. Um. And yeah, I agree. Hopefully we'll have a better idea. In the next couple of weeks, and we'll either come back with this as kind of a final version and say, well, we think we can at least get. Three or four companies, or. If you'd like to get one, two, and how do you wanna proceed?
Or we should go up to R F P for these requirements.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect, that feels good. Thanks.
All right.
So it's, it's no action at this time.
Uh, yep.
The two of them, two.
I'm, I'm gonna move to appoint commissioners, Bond, Becker, and Clark to sign warrants. No, excuse me. I'm gonna move to appoint Commissioner Clark to review and sign the warrant. With the check.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we need to set the mileage rate for twenty-twenty-four.
Move to set the standard mileage rate for the use of a vehicle at IRS amount of sixty-seven cents per mile driven for business use for nine, for twenty-twenty-four. That's what you're recommending.
Well, I mean, that's traditionally, I think, what we've tried to do.
Yeah.
So, uh, we have a couple of contracts like the A C O, but we knew that because we didn't know what the rate would be. It'll be a little bit under what we built, but. We're not reimbursing the warrants the vehicle holds on it. It just could be for others.
I seconded. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like to pay expenses for commissioners traveling five miles from the seat.
Move to approve paying travel expenses for commissioners living over five miles from county seat.
Seconded.
And that's tradit- that's no change. It's just.
That's a, aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Authorize the treasurer and county administrator issue checks up to two thousand dollars.
I'm over.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, twenty-twenty-four regular full-time employees, employment, elected officials, employee contribution for health insurance.
So. This is my motion. Or do you wanna?
No, 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 go ahead. If you're ready, then go ahead. We just didn't have a figure to plug in for you, so.
Well, and I can tell you where I got my figures from. Uh. Where's that sheet?
It should have been rated. In the commissioners' section.
So where I got that is the latest, uh, C B A non-union employee, so. So. Move to set the twenty-twenty-four regular full-time employees exempt. Wanted elected officials employee contributions for health insurance at seventy-three dollars per week. For singles, seventy-two twenty-five. For employee with child, children, and eighty-three fifty per week for employee with spouse, family. Except, I'm sorry, that. Second one was seventy-eight twenty-five, seventy-two twenty-five. So where I got that, you see where I got that?
Well, not exactly, so please. I see what the rates are, but I mean.
Where I got it was from the last C B A that we did.
The R C C?
Yes.
Okay. I will just, well, I don't know if you want a second for that, or obviously for our comments or.
Well, go ahead.
Uh, so, one, that's a huge jump because we didn't adjust it last year as well, and I don't know about the years before that, because I wasn't here, but. I mean, you are talking about thirteen. Give or take dollars a week. And, and put that over here, that is a big chunk to add on all at once to bring it back up to. Ones that have been adjusted probably every three years. And put that over here, that is a big chunk to add on all at once, to bring it back up to ones that have been adjusted probably every three years. That's maybe our own fault for not doing that as accounting, but I do think probably the employees are gonna, some of the employees are gonna say the same thing, and I, I know there's people in the audience.
I got my hand up already.
Those people in the audience, like, can step aside and think. Go ahead.
I don't understand why you wanna jump ours up when you didn't even, um, touch on this in your union contract. We got a lower cost of living raise than the unions did, and you wanna jump us up, I don't think you're doing it at the right time.
So, the reason I did this is, this has been overlooked for years, we need to catch up at some point, I mean.
On who's back, lowest class of people paid in the county is who you're putting it on.
So you're trying to move the scale here, here?
Well, I think this scale should be everywhere, but obviously, they're not, so you, I, I understand your point, I really, really do. But, we, at some point, we'll have to catch up.
Well, when are you gonna catch the pay scale up? Same thing.
You're, yeah. Well, so, let me ask, so the, um, the rates that we have listed, uh, on the printout right now at the sixty dollars per week.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Is that what it is currently this year?
Was basically, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that hasn't been changed in a while.
And it wasn't last year, I don't, yeah, like I said, I, I don't know.
It's never been changed since I've been here, though.
So then it's probably.
No.
That's not fair?
No.
So what's changed?
It's, it has changed.
When?
I don't know, I just know it just keeps going up. That's all I can say.
It didn't last year or the year before, right?
I can only attest to last year, obviously.
I don't think it sets still for very long, I, and I'm being serious.
I'm just trying to, the, the, I understand the point, it's just, we have to introduce some consistency somewhere, o- otherwise, we're just gonna keep going backwards, and, and we are. I'm not stuck on this rate, I just picked that one because that was the latest one.
And I do, I mean, we had these discussions before too, I do think, to a degree, you know, that what, what was said is, is correct, because, I mean, the rates probably should be higher for those that are making more than others, I mean.
Yeah.
A, a, it, it certainly their representation gets that. And again, my other concern is, is just the, the dramatic impact to try to make that all up at once.
Yeah. So. And, you know, maybe the answer is that we need, because we're gonna have this argument every year. Maybe, well, gradual increases. Gradual increases and, 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 and maybe tied to the COLA, you know, I don't know how.
I don't know what the answer is. I feel like we need to, I think, if we were gonna do some kind of an increase on it, it would be better for us to, see the history of how it's been increased, over time, to see kind of where it's gotten increased, how often it's gotten increased. And, I mean, I agree, if it's been sitting the same way for years, it needs to go up, it's just the way it is. But, whether it should match everybody else is a whole other page.
I wasn't, I wasn't asked to take a look at this before today, so.
Yeah, well, that's why I.
So if I, if I could, if I could have time, uh, I could, I don't know what it does to.
The only question it comes down to is, I mean, right now, this is, the, the hasn't, rate hasn't been set, so we can only continue to take out
Yeah, yeah.
Employees for the first couple of weeks of, uh, this year.
Yeah.
What we've been doing, and then.
Then we can, we can adjust if we can.
Have to adjust.
I think, yeah. I think we were essentially, had to come back, but more information shows the history.
Perhaps the recommendations. Yes, and, and, by the way, my motion died for lack of a second.
Thank you.
So.
A- a- and I'll just say, I flagged this for the end of next year, to have the conversation in December, obviously not now.
Yeah.
So, it's just we hadn't done it in the last couple of years, so nonetheless, yeah, going through the agendas, looking at stuff, we're trying to get the stuff we know we need to do, and, and, you know, basically, I said, well, wait a minute, we still haven't even done that, so.
Well, and, again, I, you know, I'm not trying to mess up anybody, but we do, this hasn't been looked at in a while, it's gonna, it's gotta be an increase, you know, just. We gotta get there, you know, in a fair way to everybody, and I don't like that it's different on all these other groups. I think, to me, it should be, you know, all the same, or something like you've mentioned, you know, it's gotta be. I guess we wanna, we need a recommendation.
Okay.
Because I don't know how to go on.
Okay.
Alright, so, we'll put it off for now.
So you want me to, you wanna move this table in?
That basically would involve, though, us giving you kind of that historical perspective.
Yeah.
And then showing kind of what the, what the number of years you're actually looking at, since the chain has or has not occurred.
Yeah.
And how you could try to get that up.
Yeah.
Over people.
We've only had this insurance for four years.
I, I don't think it's been that long since the change was made, but I, I, I'll have to look to be sure, I.
Yeah, I mean, we have a.
It's not much of a history to look at, to be honest, now, if we compare it to. Both.
I think twenty-eighteen was when they went from.
So, it shouldn't take much to just see some history.
Yeah.
See where you go forward.
I mean, is that reasonable, I mean, are we throwing something?
Well, I mean, I think it gives us something to at least base it on, I know, and a chance to look at it now. I know this may not be popular, but throwing it out, i- i- when you talk about equity in terms of everybody being on the same thing, that does open up the conversation about equity of pay. You can't give non-exempt three percent and then turn around and give union people seven percent, so you're going down a slippery slope when we start.
I know, I don't, that's what I.
At it that way, so.
Totally, totally agree, and, and.
And we certainly don't want to, you know, necessarily start having employees wanna, start forming, you know.
Well, a- and the other thing that it does, you know, the point you raised is very valid, where and how we're talking about equalizing it is using this, I don't think that's right. You know, uh, this year was, if you remember the year before, we, non-exempt people, we went up, you know, I remember I made the motion.
To catch us up.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and, you know, I got beat up pretty hard for that, you know, from constituents, not from staff, staff loved it, but, uh, you know, we, we can't have these disparities, and we've gotta have that in mind when we're talking to the unions, you know. But, you know, there's, there's issues out, and, and I'm not saying that we negotiated bad faith or screwed up negotiating here, but we've gotta keep everybody in mind.
Is there a possibility to be able to find the insurance that will cover us the way that we need to act, slightly more than what the current rate is? This is probably one of the better, if not.
Yeah, we have a great policy.
The best.
Yeah, and the reason behind that, to be very honest, is this is associated with the team, so, and the, and the union has allowed that county as a whole to be able to partake in that, so.
Because you're thinking here, because we're talking about nearly six hundred dollars a year to bring us, bring the one group up to the level of the other group, and, yeah, that, that does bite your wallet pretty good.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm not advocating one way or the other here, I'm just echoing that, you know.
Well, it affects us too.
We, we can't, there, there may not ever be a hundred percent parity, I guess, with, with these numbers, in, unless you wanna start looking at salary parity as well. So, but, I mean, that's for another day.
Okay, but you're comfortable with us not taking any actions?
Yes, I mean, as long as you're comfortable, but, for us to continue the practice of what we're doing until you set the rate yet twenty-twenty-four.
We've got to, that's honest, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna move to approve hiring, we need to have a board at Blue Hill as administrative assistant in commissioners office at level nine seat.
Seconded.
Do you, anybody wanna?
You want to say anything?
Um, I mean, certainly, if you're, you're happy with that, we're, we're certainly happy to see somebody started and.
When are they gonna start?
Give them some training time, so they kind of, as you know, I already worked for the county anyway a little bit, so we're trying to work a deal to kind of have some job shadowing off their current time, because they do have some other job obligations as well, so they can't be here immediately, but we're hoping to give them as much time as we can with Patrice. So certainly within the next week or so, does she give a specific date?
Um, she said, um, the nineteenth is when she can, she has to give two weeks on the job, the other, the other job that she has, um, in order to come in full-time, but her plan is to come in Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, when she has, um, availability, she's in probate, to come in and shadow, uh, Patrice as best she can, so that she can see what that job looks like. And working on this, kind of figuring out what it is she's gonna need to know.
That's great.
Yes and no. I mean, I can't possibly teach somebody how to do payroll in two days, you know, or a week. You know, and Mary and I are both, I mean, I'll be done in January, and Mary's going on vacation, there's no backup. I mean, I'm willing to stay on if the girl doesn't get it, um, or it's a lot harder to train her, or she, you know, I'm just concerned with the payroll. I'm concerned with you guys and your meetings, which somebody else can back that up, not payroll. You know, Mary and I are, I am the only one in the office, and that's how the payroll system runs. Mary knows how to do payroll, but there's a lot involved that Mary isn't up to speed on yet, so that's my concern. Let's do the best we can.
That's all we do.
Yeah, that's what happens during transitions.
Yeah.
And if, and during the transition, if you help, you'll come to us, I assume.
Yeah.
Call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, do we have any county administrative comments?
I do. Yeah. Comments? I do, uh, preparation for this meeting, I noticed that the agenda policy, uh, posted on the county's website, is, I think, out of date. And I didn't see our rules of order there, which, you know, I thought we had taken action back in March, maybe, or late February, to rescind one policy and.
Yeah, to advertise new one.
Yeah, well, I just, um, I just, that was just a, I think we've done everything we all had to do.
Internally, it, it just.
We just need that.
Website is also probably, yeah, I know there's a couple other things that we've been trying to convey to them to change, and we've been trying to do a piece mail, but that's probably one that just felt.
Can, can you do a screenshot of what it is that means to be changed, is, you know?
If you just go to the county website and you look, there's a, under commissioners, there's an agenda policy.
Okay.
And, uh, the only reason I bring that up is, my guess is that we're reliant on somebody else to change the, the.
It, it depends on the nature of what you need to do. I mean, ideally, I don't think this is a very user-friendly, supportive type of thing, and we certainly don't have anybody on staff, I mean, Patrice is probably the closest one who is dedicated to making the changes, but.
So IT doesn't have any.
They don't have any.
We wouldn't need another body.
Yeah, and, and they've kind of made that clear in the past.
Technically, I agree with you, yes.
Could we add that?
Another body.
But also, the question is, is then, is the system, the website we're using right now, is that the best and proper format for what we need to do, and if you look at other counties' websites, some greatly outweigh what we offer.
Is, is, is that website through the Alsworth American, well, well, how much would they charge you to do your updates? Because they do mine, and I don't pay very much for the town. I mean, seriously, I pay a small monthly fee, it's not a person, I'll tell you that right now, it's not.
I'm not trying to.
No.
I'm just trying, I, I, just one thing I know.
It's one of those things that, that needs to be, needs to be done.
Yeah.
But the question becomes, is then, who's, who's got the time, knowledge, and ability to do it?
How to go on.
Yeah, and, I mean, obviously, if that's, of course, to get it up, I mean, we want it to be right, so anytime we have anybody, we encourage them, they see something wrong, let us know, and then we usually try to fix it. And if it's something we can't fix, you know, by Patrice, if she can't do it or needs, then because of how it's set up for them to do something, then she notifies them, and they usually are pretty good about making changes. Yeah.
I, I wasn't trying to open a can of worms, it was just an observation, and I didn't know how it worked.
You always let it out of the can.
We can do some of it, and some of it, we just call over and we ask them to fix for us.
Good.
Very good, next slide. Move to adjourn.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.